Meeting of the Streetport City Council is now called to order. I call on Reverend Willis Dear to lead us in the invocation. And Casey Brown will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord God, you've called each of us in this council in the service of those whom we represent in this community. You've enabled us to serve with gifts and talents, with knowledge and a desire to listen and to learn, to respond to those in our community. We're often met with many difficulties and challenges, but you've given us hearts and minds to work together, to mediate and to find answers to questions and find solutions to problems, to calm angry voices and to bring reason into play when we work with people. Give our mayor and our city council humility and servanthood, knowledge and wisdom, strength and courage to handle difficulties and challenges in ways that bring reconciliation, resolution, and accountability with peace and satisfaction to all of our citizens of Shreveport and the surrounding areas. And for the peoples of Shreveport, red and yellow, black and white, they're all precious in your sight. So make us responsible and responsive to this council with our grievances, with our questions, with our difficulties, with our challenges, and with our appreciation and praise for what this council says and does with us, for us, and to us. We give you thanks for this time and for our counsel with each other as we remember that you are the light and direction, our creator and sustainer for all that we say and do. Amen.
Amen.
Let's face the flag and recite the pledge. Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Taylor?
Present.
Councilwoman Fuller? President?
Present.
Councilwoman Burden?
Here.
I'm here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Some motions, Chair.
Motion made, second. Okay, Chair, second. Any discussion? Then let us vote. And that is passed with five, with one out, two outs, excuse me. I believe one will be here shortly. At this time, I'd like to, is Mr. Jackson in this audience?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson, come forward, please. I've asked Mr. Jackson to come today as my guest to speak on a subject that we all are dealing with, and that's the 18-wheelers that are parking in our neighborhoods and yards that are destroying the value of our property. Mr. Jackson, welcome, and I'm glad you're here and you have the floor to speak.
Well, I don't want to be long. Thank y'all for having me, and I am nervous because I'm not putting the speaker. What I would like to address is the way we handle or deal with property standards. I've spent a lot of time trying to track down phone numbers, the correct department, who to call to report, to get whatever. It's been a cat race, catches and tails. You get pushed to one department, to another, to another, and no one wants to take responsibility or ownership of this property standard situation. My question becomes, what good are property standards if we're not going to enforce them? Why should the citizen or residents be the only ones that's trying to report these violations when all of us pass by them at one point or another? In a nutshell, that's it. In this one case, customer Flur, we had an 18-wheeler parked across the front lawn, not on the driveway, not on the street, across the front lawn, on Baird Road, at the corner. Everybody see it. For two weeks, I had been calling, calling, and calling so no one thinks that's a problem. If one person does it, what happens when the next person does it? And so on and so on. There goes our community. So, thank you for your time.
And then, Ms. Jackson, before you leave, I wanted to share this with the mayor. That vehicle that he's talking about was off of Baird Road, I'm not going to give the location, but let me tell you, that sat there for two weeks. I had calls on it. As the councilman, I phoned the community police sergeant and asked her to write a ticket or do something that I was catching a lot of flack. Nothing was done, nothing! And so I, being, I wasn't going to give up. And so I called the chief of police yesterday and begged him to go and do something because I said, "I know we can't tow and we can't, but this is ruining the neighborhood. These people have paid good money to move to Southern Hills, to have pride in their property, and this guy comes along and pulls his 18-wheeler, and they're all over the city, by the way, not just Southern Hills. They're everywhere. But we are limited in what we can do with enforcement." But let me tell you, Ms. Jackson, the chief of police intervened yesterday, and that vehicle is gone.
Thank you.
It's not there. I drove by there on the way down here. And so there is hope, but we've got to get our public safety and council, we've got to come up with some stronger law to be able to try to stop this.
Right. One thing I'd like to add, because I thank you for that phone call, but why does it take so much?
Right.
That's the question. So, I was told by one department, I go call no head, I had called around and called around. They said, "Well, call the police department." And I said, "Why?" I said, "Why you?" I'd called everybody else, and they want me to call the police department.
Yeah. Well, let me just say this, Jerry Bowman and several of the council members, we're looking at ordinance, and it may be coming, I'm not sure, but it's going, we ain't got it in the works that we're going to transfer that ticket writing to another department. That's what we're talking about. Now, whether that gets done, I don't know if it has the votes, but that's what we're trying to do, is get that spread around, because I understand the police that have, they're busy, don't have things, other things to do, but we've got to come up with something because they're destroying our neighborhoods.
So, let me ask you this, because it appears to me we're taking a reactive approach versus a proactive approach. So if that's the case, then we're still chasing our tails. Because someone's just going to wait till someone have to complain about it, and then when you stop and go and do all of this calling around, everybody life is busy, I get it. People get tired of calling and nothing happens or what have you. So, how do we change that mindset? How do we change this from being, you know, reactive versus proactive?
Well, I'm not sure that I have the answer to that, but I can just say, I know this mayor, and I know that once you tell him about a problem, he and his staff, Mr. Whitehorn and others, they will address it. And so it, that problem didn't come here overnight, and it won't leave overnight, but I promise you, they will look at it and see if there's a better way of building widgets. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you for your time.
Any other council member this time?
This is Chairman, can I actually, I want to, I don't want to forget about this, can I actually have Deputy Chief White, and Terrence, can you guys come up? Can we educate the public really quick on instances like that, when they see it, what they can do, what's the property department to report, and what's the process?
Good idea, Mayor.
First of all, sir, I can't remember your name, but I want to thank you for coming up, caring about your community and blushing your concerns here today. I did hear what you said, I heard your concerns, and we will definitely take a look at how we respond currently. Currently, when there are parking issues in neighborhoods similar to yours, we refer our citizens to their local area CLO, and that's Corporal J. Castaneda in your area. We'll definitely have conversations. I'd like to get your number before you leave here today, and if there's any way we can improve that process, we'll do so.
Most of your commercial vehicles that are in the communities will be dealt with by SPD and sometimes MPC. So, we deal with the inoperable, broken-down vehicles that are in the yards.
So, Mr. Green, what you're saying is, this doesn't go to property standards, it goes to the police and to the MPC?
Right.
Okay. So what happens when people try to call in to you? Do you just redirect it to the MPC?
We redirect it or we forward on the emails.
Okay, thank you.
If this is moved to your department, whereas the ticket writing and all of those particular infractions begin to fall on the property standards, do you have the staff for that?
Well, here's the thing. You have a seven-day sticker versus an inoperable vehicle sticker. A seven-day sticker requires no notification to the owner and no process other than that seven days to be told. Our sticker requires environmental court, a 10-day, well, a 10-day notice, and a second inspection before they're sent to summons to go to environmental court. So feasibility, time-wise, you're going to take a lot longer dealing with environmental court than you would a seven-day sticker.
So the seven-day sticker is issued by?
SPD.
SPD? And so they have seven days to move that vehicle?
Yes, ma'am.
And so his vehicle was left, that vehicle that Mr. Jackson spoke of was there for 14 days or so, Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
14 days, okay.
Now, let me ask, under the section 90-277, civil penalty for parking infractions, the first ticket is $100. The second fine is 300, and the third violation is $525. And looking at going forward, Liz Swain downtown, y'all still put the boots on the people that don't pay the tickets?
Yes.
So maybe that we could, I'm just asking, I've got to talk to Mr. Latier, but maybe that's something we need to look at, is to, these people ignore them, because sometimes we write five tickets and nothing happens, but they just keep parking. Now, they find a vacant place and they park, and on Sunday, Saturday and Sunday, you can't get anybody out there to write a ticket. And so I'm just saying that we've got to do something because it's ruining our city. It's destroying the image of our city, and people buy these nice homes and they go and hear, somebody comes in across the street, parks 18-wheeler, and, you know, they first, they call y'all, and then they call the mayor's office, and then they call the city council, and it just seems like nothing gets done. So I'm hoping we go forward, that we rewrite this law to where we can do something to try to stop what we see out there now. Thank y'all very much, here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was there a zoning issue involved in this particular incident as well with the property, the way it was zoned? Is that the same incident that you and I talked about, or is this something separate?
That's right, yeah.
Yes, sir, okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Just for instance, one, I just left Southern Home coming this way. There's a guy that parks his hot shot trailer that's 31 feet on the street in front of his house and some nice homes, but he has been written ticket after ticket, and he parks it, that trailer, out on the street, and it just looks like junkyard dog lives there. I mean, it's terrible, terrible. You buy a nice home, pay your money, your hard-earning money, and you buy a home and move to a neighborhood, and then somebody comes in there and trashes it. So, enough of that. Anybody else now? Have, Ms. Councilwoman Fuller, I believe you wanted to.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to call up Ms. Neo Weeks and Ms. Victoria Tillis, please. Ms. Weeks is a friend and mentor that's visiting us from New Orleans that's been helping me with the ordinance that's been introduced, the Crown Act ordinance, that's on first read and introduction today. And so I'd like to invite her to start her presentation, and then we'll hear from Ms. Victoria Tillis, who is the owner of Volume Life Salon Studio. Does it have a removed mask to talk? Is that okay? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for letting me be here. As Councilmember Fuller said, I am visiting from New Orleans, but I have fallen in love with your city, Shreveport. The people here across border are some of my favorite people in this state, so thank you for allowing me to visit your city once again. One of my favorite songs is India Rees, "I Am Not My Hair," and it is true, we are not just our hair. But for black women, our hair tells a story. It's interconnected to who we are. In this country, we have struggled with concepts when it comes to race and connectivity and conversations, and intermingled in that complex conversation are conversations around natural black hair. You see, despite the pride that black women have developed over recent years, it has not prevented discrimination in regards that we face at work and at home and at school when it comes to our hair. You see, the fact that black natural hairstyles are not regarded as professional perpetuates stereotypes, using Eurocentric ideas of what it looks, means to look professional in this country. You see, the reality is that unfortunately, black women are 1.5 times more likely to be sent home from the workplace because of their hair, and 80% more likely to change their hairstyles to fit in with the marketplace in order to hold on to their job. You see, as amazing as the people we have here in this city and across this state, we have a complex history, and we face many systemic barriers, just to name a few, when it comes to regarding women, especially black women. In this state, black women earn 47 cents to every dollar earned by white men, but 67% of black households are run by women. You know, black women in Louisiana also have the highest maternal mortality rate in the entire country, right? So despite 30 years of civil rights legislation, the right to exercise one's freedom remains connected to the ability to wear your hair the way you choose that you can maintain employment. The reality is, is that even though I stand here solo with some incredible black women, but just, you know, we're a small representation, we also represent many, many black women and girls in this city and across this state, who instead of preparing for the vocabulary test, sat there and had the audacious decision of how to wear their hair so they wouldn't get kicked out of school. Instead of black women being able to call their client or prepare the report one last time before they go into the workplace, they contemplate, "Should I change my hairstyle so that it fits in, so that it's not distracting and doesn't cause me to be fired, which happens repeatedly?" There's also the reality that the process to not maintain a natural hairstyle, even though you so may choose, is also has health implications. And so we're making decisions about our health, about our economic status rooted in our hair so that we won't be punished by it. You know, I know when our children enter this world, I am the mother of four, ages 21 to 7, sorry, 14, she just turned 14. And I love every strand on my children's hair. And when I speak to young kids, when I ask them, you know, "What do you want the world to see when they see you?" They, really, it's very simple, they just want the world to see them for who they are, and every strand of their hair to be respected and revered for what it is, beautiful and special and important, just like they are. And so we're asking that, across the state, that cities and municipalities follow along with the country and say that you cannot discriminate against natural hair choices and natural hairstyle choices because it is rooted and connected to who we are, it's acknowledgement of the diversity of the beauty that we hold in the city and the state and this country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody, good evening. How are you guys doing? I'm Victoria Tillis, and I am the salon owner and master stylist at Volume Life Salon Studio. My salon was created to be a safe haven for women with textured hair, where they can learn more and understand more in regards to their hair, in turn taking better care of it, embracing it, and ultimately embracing themselves for all of who they naturally are. This is important to me because so many black women, who are powerhouses in their careers and in society, are showing up in the world more broken than their counterparts, and that brokenness is related to their hair. Living in a world where not only have black female voices been second place for so many decades, but also where we also have to second-guess whether who we are, as God has designed us to be, will be good enough or accepted in a space that drives our livelihood, is simply traumatic. Anyone who has struggled with feeling good enough for anything can relate to the mental breakdown that can have on a person and their self-image. Is it too big? Is it too wild? Do you think they'll ask to touch it? I should just straighten it so I don't scare them off, because I want them to see me and my work. These are some of the fears that some of my guests share with me daily. There are brilliant women who are changing the way the world unfolds that are fearful to show up in all the glory of who they are due to outdated beauty standards. For too long, black women have had to juggle the responsibility of trying to cater to how other people feel when we enter a room. Having to juggle that responsibility has led us, black women, and our young queens looking up to us, to lose our hair and in that, lose our love for who we see in the mirror. It's time to change that narrative. It's time to redefine beauty standards. It is time to take black women and all the magical things that maybe the next person may not understand off the chopping block. Professionalism isn't a look, but a desire to show up as your highest self in any career-related space. We deserve more, we yearn for more, and we are fighting for more. Being able to comfortably show up as who you are is a birthright, not a topic of discussion for your next work meeting. It's time to remove all the compartmentalism related to dissecting who black women are and to what degree that looks like that's allowed for us to shine. With the progress of society, we are blessed with more access to information about proper care for our God-given hair. This means that the versatility to how we can show up in our natural essence is unlimited. Our hair functions best when it's tucked away into protective styles like twists, braids, comb twists, and flat twists. Our hair especially thrives when it is in an environment where it can be protected from overmanipulation, excessive pulling, and harsh environmental conditions. This includes wearing our tresses in its natural pattern with just product alone. So I'm here to advocate for women who like me, who have grown through some of the same hair struggles and breakthroughs within their journey of self-acceptance through the channel of what's been coined "going natural." We really aren't going, but returning to all of who God made us to be. When we are breaking our hair to fit into an image others hold for us, we are breaking our spirits. No one should have to have, no one should have to ask for permission to have pride and confidence in who they are, exactly how they are, because we are enough as we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Where's your salon?
Ma'am?
Where's your salon?
It's off Knight Street, 2924 Knight Street.
29?
2924 Knight Street, yes, ma'am.
Because a lot of women who wear natural hair, that's one of the problems that they have, and I think you already know this, is actually finding someone to maintain and take care of their hair.
Mm-hmm, right. Yes, ma'am.
So, no, seriously, when you make that transition from having your hair relaxed to a natural state, there are not many, you know, your tutorial guide is YouTube or Instagram on how to take care of your hair.
Absolutely.
Well, you actually need someone to go over there and teach us to make that transition from what we know from relaxed hair to our own very textured hair.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm happy to know that.
Yes, ma'am.
So why are you?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that many states and municipalities have adopted legislation similar to this, is that right?
Correct. New Orleans being one of them, and New Orleans was actually the first city in the Deep South to actually get one. So, just saying, if Shreveport wants to be number two in the Deep South, I'm welcome to join.
Really quick, if I can, they're discussing this in, they're discussing this in the legislature right now, right? It just made it out of committee last week, correct?
That's correct.
Has it gone up for a vote in either the House or the full vote yet?
Not the full House.
Okay, all right.
It made it out of committee?
No, I'm sorry, it did make it out of committee, on both sides. Yes, it did make it.
Councilman Green, would you recommend?
What about men? Y'all teach them about?
Yes, sir, I just take care of men as well.
You gotta do something about my beard?
Yes.
All right, I'll be over there.
Whitehorn, you on the board?
No, sir, I was trying to clear.
Okay, that's okay. Let me recognize that. Okay.
Thank you all so much for taking time out of your day to come and speak to this.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council members? Councilman Green?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Mr. Patrick Furlong.
Patrick Furlong?
Yes.
I wanted you to get, so the public will know, and then I'd give an update about the light, and then I'd like to actually give a few questions and see if you could answer, and then we'll go from there.
Yes, sir. The project for a traffic signal at St. Vincent 84th is under contract with the contractor. We've run into some delays. They anticipated mobilizing by now, and they plan on being out there next week. They're in training this week, and they plan on being out there next week to start construction. They're going to, you know, one of the first things they do is drill the shafts for the foundations and then pour the foundations, and then they erect the poles, and then they have fiber optic line to run. But there is a delay with the control panel box, the controls, getting that material is delayed for delivery. So they do intend to start construction, but we are not certain when that material will be delivered. We're thinking it's going to be several months delay. So they're going to do all that they can, but the lights will not be operational until all the material is in place. And it's just an issue with the supply chain. It's a national issue, as I understand, just with electronics. And it's, you know, the supplier is citing, it's COVID-related.
Okay. When was the contract signed?
Probably a couple months ago.
Okay. From that contract, how much money have we already paid them?
I don't think we made any payments to the contractor.
We just got the contract signed?
Yes, sir.
So we don't pay them until they finish?
Well, we pay them monthly, once they get started, for work that's completed in that month.
Okay. When we did the contract, what was the start date and what was the complete date?
Well, it's a 30-day contract. So, it doesn't come with a start date, the start date is when the notice to proceed is issued. And it was set up with a 30-day window for them to start and complete, be finished within 30 days. But the materials, under normal circumstances, take several months to order. So, once the contract's executed, we meet with the contractor and see when materials are going to arrive, and then, you know, we see that three- or four-month window, and after that window of ordering materials, which they have to have a contract in place to order materials, once they order materials and we, you know, anticipate them arriving on a certain date, we issue the notice to proceed, and then they have that month to construct it.
Okay. So last year, when you were telling me, like, we're going to have it up in March, we was going to have it up in April, and then we were going to have it up in May, we were just saying we were going to do it, were we interchanging with them, or that was just something we were just saying?
No, sir. I look back at the emails, and it was mapped out pretty well with the schedule about, you know, starting, and we thought they were going to be completed in May. That's what we anticipated the whole time.
Is there?
And it is on estimate.
Okay. Is there a forfeit clause in the contract?
There are termination clauses. But just to let you know, future contracts, we don't anticipate having a 30-day period for the contract. We anticipate perhaps like a six-month contract, and as soon as that contract's executed, we issue the notice to proceed, and they get their materials and they construct it within that, within that six months, whether they drive and fly to China to get their materials or whatever they have to do. But that's how we intend on setting up future contracts.
Okay. So about when did they know they had the job, the contract?
Several months ago, several months ago, three to four months ago.
So would you find out if, in fact, since we're talking about that? So would you find out if, in fact, since we're talking about that chip and all, if they, if they're putting up any lights anywhere in America? And if they are having any problems with those, or is it just this one?
I can, I can find that out, but I do know that there are supplying, supply chain issues with other material with other departments at the city. So I know that we're having them with anything associated with computer chips. We discussed that in staff meeting this week. And I've seen several news stories about several other issues, but I'll check on this specific, you know, control panel for traffic signals. And I anticipate the situation being different all across the country, but with, you know, how contracts are written, what materials they have and don't have, but I will certainly look into it.
Right. Well, it's like this, Patrick. I mean, when you gave them the contract, when they signed the contract that they're gonna do this job for the light, then if they didn't have the material, I mean, I've heard about this chip since way back, about different chips, but if they, in fact, didn't start getting their material at the time they got the contract and they just decided, because last council meeting when we talked, there was no chip in sight. I mean, we didn't have a chip problem.
Correct.
And so I take your word as to if you say it's gonna be in March, if you say it's gonna be in April, if you say it's gonna be in May, then I take your word. The constituents, I tell them, it's gonna be in May, it's gonna be in March, it's gonna be in April because Patrick said it. And so then now I gotta go back and tell them that because of the chip, that it hadn't been chipped, then I gotta tell them something else different. But I would like for our city attorney to check into the contract to see if there's a breach of contract, if, in fact, they forfeit what they were supposed to do. Because if I, if you give me a, if you give me a, I'm just throwing this out parenthetic pack. Somebody called me about preaching a sermon. I'm not gonna wait until the last day to get my material together. I'm gonna get it all together and have my sermon ready, and I'm gonna show up on time. So if they say to you, okay, we gonna put this light up, and then two months later they say, well, we can't put it up because we got a chip.
Yes, sir.
But my request would be, one, to ask my city attorney to check into the contract. Two, is ask them to put up everything but the chip. I mean, they don't have to have the chip to put up the pole and all that stuff, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, thank you, Patrick. Anything else?
No, sir, but the concern of the delivery, the concern has always been there with materials. We've been uncertain this whole time. It was just confirmed recently that there was a confirmed delay.
Yeah, but when you were talking to me, you never said, well, maybe. You just say, it's gonna be in March, it's gonna be in April, it's gonna be in May. So that's what I told the people, that by the end of May, this time, that we will have it up. So now it's by the end of when that it'll be up. I know you, I know about the chip and the panel.
And I also told you, and I'm telling you.
Sir?
And I'm also telling you that they plan on starting next week.
Yeah, you just told me that.
Yes.
I just found out that now.
And?
Last week, then, the last council meeting, we didn't have an issue about it was gonna be in May. This time it's gonna be in June.
So they do plan on starting next week. Whether or not they do, I cannot control that. They might not show up next week. But I am telling you that they plan on starting next week. They tell us that they are, I have every reason to believe that they will. And I have every reason to believe that they're gonna install everything except this control panel. But, but I cannot control them coming and going. I can contractually, but right now we're managing the contract properly. There is a termination clause, but, and if we believe that they're pulling our chain, we can terminate the contract. But this is, part of our project management is to do the best for the city. And right now, keeping this, we believe that keeping this contract going and open is the best thing to do, and it's gonna be the best thing to get that light erected. If we, if we terminate now, you know, they, the delay is a valid delay.
Okay, today, well, it ain't valuable. But what I'm saying is, just have them to go on and put up everything but the panel, and I'll be good until we can get the chip. So that's, that's where I?
We have asked them to, and they said that they will.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Furlong? Don't leave.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanna get a timeline. I know that we've talked about this regarding street repairs. Has the process already started? I know that we're looking at street repairs to begin in 2022. And so have we began that particular paperwork?
Yes, ma'am. With that particular project that was approved earlier this year, right now there's an RFS advertising to hire the engineer to design that project.
Okay.
So it is, it is moving.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On any other counsel?
I would like to extend my sincere condolences to Audrey Miller. Audrey Miller was my personal icon in this community, and she passed on last week, and they held her funeral on today. She was affectionately known as the mayor of School Park. And the next council meeting, I will ask, have a resolution to dedicate the 2100 block of Utah in her honor. She was the elections commissioner and had been since 1992. And so at Bogert T. Washington High School, by Mike Pence, they issued a proclamation on today to dedicate that precinct to her at BTW. Yes. And also thank you, Mayor Perkins, for administering a proclamation for Ms. Miller. I also like to extend my condolences to the family of Freddie Phillips, who lost his life on Sunday in the plane crash over Cross Lake. And I would also like to give kudos to Josh, I'm pronouncing his name incorrectly, Josh Flunderberg, Flunderberg. Yesterday evening on Cross Lake, a boat, a truck, and a trailer went into the lake. And Mr. Flunderberg jumped in and assisted, helped to talk truck driver, and pulled the boat, the trailer, and everything out of Cross Lake. It was pretty amazing to watch, but what was most amazing was the truck was still running after being in the water. So get y'all a Dodge Ram, I guess, because it was still. Yes, so thank you so much, and just keep those families in your prayers.
Thank you. Anything else from counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to briefly express my appreciation once again to Mayor Perkins, to Councilwoman Taylor, and all our colleagues who supported the marijuana legislation, which we recently passed, which reduced the penalty under city law for possessing a small quantity of marijuana to just fifty dollars. A bill inspired by that legislation, Representative Glover's House Bill 652, passed out of Senate Committee this morning, and if the full Senate adopts it, if the full Senate adopts that bill, it will end the practice in the state of Louisiana of incarcerating people for possessing small quantities of marijuana, which will be a tremendous step forward for criminal justice in our state. So thank you, Mayor Perkins. Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody else? Mayor Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As some of you might have heard, we just held a press conference, Stop the Violence, press conference about next weekend. We'll be doing citywide prayer on Saturday and Sunday. We will have a prayer at the major intersections in each council district on Saturday. For about five to seven minutes, we'll be holding up traffic. And then on Sunday, we will have ecumenical prayer that'll be held at Independent Stadium at 3:00 P.M. So please join us if you can. Last week, I signed an executive order stating that all unvaccinated employees and visitors, especially the most vulnerable to government buildings and offices of the city of Shreveport, are allowed and encouraged to wear a face covering over the nose and mouth. However, face coverings will not be required while entering or exiting. Employees and visitors who are present during public meetings, conferences, or other gatherings are still required to wear face coverings over the nose and mouth while inside government buildings and offices, except in limited circumstances. We have held three town halls thus far to hear citizens' concerns about four topics: public safety, infrastructure, technology, and economic development. The next meeting will be Tuesday, June 1st, from 6:00 P.M. to 8:00 P.M. at David Raines Recreational Center. We also have a survey at www.shreveportla.gov asking citizens to rank where they would like to see the expected federal dollars coming into the city of Shreveport spent. The last topic I just wanna touch on, we kinda already touched on it, Councilwoman Green, when talking about the light. We know that the public health crisis was front and center last year and continues to go on. Hopefully, we'll be out of that soon as we increase vaccinations. But the economic crisis that ensued has caused some reverberations throughout our economy, and the city of Shreveport is not immune to that. So there is a lot of raw materials and, and a lot of raw materials and equipment that we have requested, that we expected to have months ago, that has been delayed for months. Not only with raw materials and the increased prices and the delays in those materials being delivered and other equipment being delivered, but also personnel matters as well. So I just ask that the citizens be patient with us. We're doing the best that we can with what we have, but we are going through the exact same economic woes right now that a lot of other entities in our city are going through. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite up Mr. Harold Sater. If you all have any questions for him, he is my board appointee for the MPC Board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Y'all have any questions for Mr. Sater?
I do.
Okay.
Make sure y'all approve him.
Your neighbor?
That's my constituent.
That's right. I feel like they've seen you before. Harold, we appreciate you willing to serve, okay?
Thank you. Take care.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Does any member have a question, concerns to property standards from Mr. Green? Mr. Green, I believe we're all clear up here, but thank you. Mr. Clark, do you have a master plan committee report or update anything on that area?
Mr. Green?
Chairman Fleury, the counsel, I never let an opportunity get by without coming by and saying positive things about planning and zoning in the city of Shreveport. As you all know, we are rounding up, finalizing the short-term rental ordinance that y'all had asked us to look into and do a nationwide search of exploratory, planning to determine what's best approach for short-term rentals in Shreveport. We're on the final stages of doing that. We also, Councilwoman Taylor, we're in the final stages of beginning to have some public forums and addressing, updating the rental residential code for the city of Shreveport. We did, like you asked, we go nationwide, looking at codes all over the United States, not just in the southern part of the country, but all over, and have some pretty interesting things that we will be presenting to you in the very near future. And, you know, I'd just like to make one comment, Councilwoman Fleury, because it's been a frustrating experience with me, as you well know, dealing with eighteen-wheelers and them parking everywhere. They're parking on the streets, which is something we can't touch. That's a policing issue. But I've found that trying to write tickets and getting those tickets paid has been a difficult process over the years. And having people show up for court and not showing up for court and having a bench warrant swung out and never getting picked up have contributed to the problems that we've had. And that's not trying to attempt to criticize anyone. I don't know how we solve that problem. It appears that each year, we have an astronomical amount of trucks that become residents of the city of Shreveport. And I've noticed, I've looked around at these different truck stops, which allow them to park for a fee. But they're not inclined to park for a fee when they can park on the city street. So I think that we will continue to study ways of attempting to address that problem. But I just wanted to share with you, because you know how much I have.
I know.
Have taught with dealing with that situation and been totally unsuccessful.
Mr. Clark, Mr. Chairman, I interject a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you may.
Mr. Clark, I thought the chairman's suggestion of booting eighteen-wheelers that are illegally parked sounded compelling to me. What do you think about that as a solution? That would nip that problem in the bud, I would think.
I think it would nip the problem in the bud. You know, I always have to turn over to this side and look at attorneys and over here, you know, because over the years, attorneys have talked to me about liabilities and anything that's associated with restricting a vehicle and so forth. So, but I think, no, I think that that would solve the problem if it's booted until the fine is paid. But, you know, I would just share with you sometime in the line of business, a fine is associated with the cost of doing business. And, you know, they pay the five hundred dollars and make a thousand, they have a profit of five hundred dollars. Those are the wonderful things that we've addressed over the years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anybody have? Did everyone get their budget, their actual financial report? All right, there are no public hearings. Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be added today?
There's not.
Okay, we have the following public comments, and the vice chair will control the time.
As I call your name, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak, Brika Peoples.
How y'all doing? I see that we have the acquisitor back on agenda.
I need you to state your name.
I'm sorry, Brika Peoples, I'm not gonna state my address. But it's 7/11/07.
Ms. Peoples?
I'm sorry.
You have to state your address for the record.
No, I'm not gonna state my address because I don't want nobody coming to my house. Oh, yeah, they will. They follow my mama. So why you don't think they will follow me?
What's the procedure for that? Because you gotta state your address.
I'm not gonna state my address. I'm not.
What's the procedure for that?
Well, 7/20, Johnson Street. It's not mine, it's the address. Anywho, the acquisitor continued to bully the citizens and the community organizer with his paper. The acquisitor never state facts. The acquisitor constantly attacked black leaders. And I assume that certain politicians push them up to it. He also stated that we are not doing anything about the crime, which is a lie. I'm in every community in Shreveport. I am a community leader. I am there. The Shreveport Times is in bias. And I wanna ask the council, have y'all contacted y'all constituents? When y'all switch up from the Times to, I mean, from the Times to the acquisitor? Because everybody I talked to was upset about it. They was highly upset about it, and they didn't know anything about it. But they would know when I leave here.
May, will the speaker suspend just?
On behalf of the people's promise.
Ms. Peoples?
Yes.
Just so you know, we received in writing that the acquisitor has withdrawn.
Oh, okay, then that's good.
So you may wanna be aware of that.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware of it. I wasn't. I wasn't, but I'm happy they gone. Thank you. But also with the crime, neither one of y'all have not contacted the community organizers that's in these communities. All of y'all know which ones are in the communities that's doing the real, the real work. And no one has yet contacted no one about the crime. And Adri, I don't know if it's personal or what, but I tried to contact you, well, I know it's personal, plenty of times, and you have yet contacted us back. But you're a leader. And I don't understand, as a leader, because I'm a leader, I put my differences aside to make sure our people are straight. And you have not done it a good job. That's it.
Craig Lee?
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect.
Craig Lee, eleven twelve Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana.
Craig, be careful, because if we're under a storm warning and the lights could go out.
Okay. That's what I said it. Uh, I handed each one of you, uh, a document that I read this past week at the Crime Prevention Summit, uh, so you have the summary. I won't go over that, because I wanna have time to address the, um, eighteen-wheeler issue, but we talked about this this morning, Tuesday morning breakfast. This is a multi-dimensional, uh, issue, and we had several people, um, talking this past week. Mayor, I have six things that we're focused on, and everybody has this. One of the big things that connects a lot of the killings in Shreveport is hip-hop music. There's a negative dynamic as relates to it. We are proposing to have a third, uh, grassroots hip-hop empowerment summit. We have people already in Shreveport, like Anthony Montgomery, who is actually related to, to one of the hip-hop icons, um, Jay Prince, and he does business with Master P. We have to take advantage of our resources that we actually have and now mobilize individuals so we can have real deal conversation. We really have to sit down with these individuals and now discuss these, uh, situations, and so they can see how guys who were in the industry, who used to sell dope, who used to commit crimes, can now, uh, do business on a positive level. Uh, next, we have, uh, monthly athletic competitions. We had a guy talking about basketball, but it's not just about, uh, basketball, 'cause everybody doesn't play basketball, but boxing, basketball, football, track, a variety of these things. Um, second, we have to have entrepreneur development competition. A lot of these guys are actually trying to do business, but, uh, I made a recommendation several years ago that we take, uh, money from community development that had come in to start the business program, instead of doing it as a loan, we keep the money as a grant, but we have competition as relates to the best ideas to promote that, and we open that up to the people who are, um, in reentry as well. So it's the concept of legally chasing the bag versus the negative aspect. The next thing is, one of the best programs we have in the country is not really promoted, and that's Job Corps. Job Corps is really the best program that we have for individuals from the ages of sixteen to twenty-four, and it is underutilized in the city of Shreveport. We gotta engage Job Corps, get more people in. And as I said this past Tuesday, one of the main reasons a lot of the young folks, um, shoot other, other than these things, they're not accustomed to shooting a gun, they're shooting ranges. So it's like, you got a toy, so you wanna use it. So we gotta get people acclimated to actually go into shooting ranges, uh, with law enforcement officers and other grassroots people. And lastly, the enhancement of the, uh.
Mr. Lee.
Offender program, so I'm just leaving that.
Hold on one, hold on one second. On the, when you, when you speak of shooting range mentorship, what, what do you mean in reference to that?
So, so in urban communities, black children, in, in particular, they're never taught how to shoot guns. White children typically, even if they're in the ru- um, city area or the rural, their parents or grandparents teach them to shoot weapons. So you have a different appreciation for the power of a gun, you have a level of respect and discipline. So these children are getting guns, however they are coming about it, we know in most instances, they're not coming upon them legally. So the whole premise is, whether it's the Sheriff Department, Police Department, Marsh Department, along with community, um, servants, you now acclimate them at a shooting range so they can really see how powerful a gun actually is. Because if you have something that's akin to almost a toy, because they're looking at video games, now they want to shoot the toy. Well, they don't have a shooting range, so a lot of times they're just shooting off rounds, and the only time they end up shooting is when they're shooting at someone. So it's a kind of like a prevention, uh, mechanism, and then it gives law enforcement an opportunity to now build relationships with them and talk to them about the usage of weapons as it relates to that overall, uh, situation.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Yes.
Craig. Craig.
That way.
Captain Green.
That way.
Craig, um, would you do me a favor?
Yeah.
Big Mama is a hundred and seven.
Yes.
You didn't go by and take a nun for her birthday, would you please go take a nun?
How you, how you know you ain't taking Big Mama?
Just tell me.
I got fifty dollars for it. All right, thank you.
You go see Big Mama, Craig.
Great, really quick, um, can you speak with, uh, we got a new economic develop- direct, economic development director, Mr. Drew Muton, can you speak with him?
Amen. One of your best hires. One of your best hires.
I want, I want you to talk to him so he can get, we got a ecosystem of incubators and, and funding that goes into, into, uh, entrepreneurs and small businesses, and he can lead, um, a lot of the entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs you're talking about, up with those, those dollars.
And, and, and Mayor in New Orleans, part of his idea came from the fact they have a thing called the Idea Village, and the Idea Village, 'cause all ideas, whether you're talking about this mic, this pen, this paper, all of these are ideas, and a lot of these young folks have ideas, but the premise that they have is that the only way in order to get my idea out, I gotta do some criminal intent. And so there are certain things that can be done if we partnership them and produce that. So definitely, I get what Drew, uh, but he's sharp. He's sharp.
Craig, go see Big Mama.
I go see Big Mama.
Pastor Brown, Albert Brown.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor.
State your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Albert Bernard Brown, four thirty-nine East State of First Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Mr. Mayor, City Councilman Chairman, City of Shreveport, City of Workers, it's an honor to be here today, uh, but I do wanna first address the fact that, uh, Mr. Patrick got up, and I still want, because I'm still getting phone calls about Lynn Ward, and I heard Mr. Green had said a few minutes ago about his situation, and I want to find out address because the people, I don't know if they calling Mr. Bosch, but they calling me to see what's going on with that section right there, that they still have not even looked like they have not even started touching yet, and it's just sitting there, and they, you know, just, they done finished everything else. It looks good, it looks great, but that other part right there from thirty-one, thirty-two all the way back, it just don't look like they're doing anything, and they don't even like they haven't even started to.
Well, they, they hadn't, they just getting ready to release the bids on that, is what I understood, I've been checking them. From thirty-one, thirty-two back, I believe, Patrick, that, am I right on that?
Yeah, I wanna get that, 'cause we get a lot of calls about that.
Yes.
It's in the process of being designed and?
Yes, sir, it's in the process of, for design, the cons- the consulting engineers were selected, and, uh, we're about to have our kickoff meeting with them, and then the design process will start, which is several months.
Seven months.
And then it'll go to bidding for the construction contractor, and then contract for a couple months, so we're.
About December, probably, more likely, is what I'm thinking.
That'd be optimistic, but, yep.
But the money's there.
The money's there, and it's.
The process is starting on it.
It's progressing.
The design, uh, engineers and all that have been selected, and so it's, it's in the hopper, working.
Okay, I'm just, 'cause they keep asking me, and.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, you too, yeah. And also, I haven't gotten back with you, Mr. Green, because of the fact that I just had a grandbaby, and she had me going, and so I, I, and I had a meeting with Mr. Green and Mr. Clark, and, uh, we're going, and, uh, the people that they had talked to me about, uh, I, the number doesn't work, so I'm gonna have to find, I'm and Mr. Green gonna have to get together, and Mr. Clark, we're gonna get together, and I'll come back with my, with my guests and tell you all what I'm talking about. And, uh, also, uh, if anybody wanna contribute to me, I, I'll be sixty years old in three days, if you wanna bless me, you know? But, uh, I, it's just an honor to know that we, uh, I know you all are working hard on doing everything you can, and, uh, but like I said, uh, just ge- keeping the people informed what's going on, and, uh, but, but I'll, like I said, I'll get back with, with the people that's asking me about, that, Mr. Florrie, like you said, about that, that section right there, because they're asking, why have they finished that? And like I told them, I'll find out what's going on, and, uh, so, so we'll, we'll, uh, we'll do that. But I, I thank you, Mr. Florrie, that you told me that I can get with you, and Mr. Green, you told me I can get with you, and, uh, everybody, and so I'll, I'll be getting back with you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Vanessa Smith. Ms. Vanessa Smith.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Mayor, staff, members of the council. William Bradford, Blanchard Walker, O'Quinn and Roberts, three-three-three, Texas Street, Suite seven hundred, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh one. I'm here on behalf of Centerpoint Energy. Uh, we are their council of record, and also, uh, we'll be speaking on behalf of some of the other utilities. This is on ordinance number seventy-four, I believe, that's proposed for final passage today. We're only here to ask for this matter to be postponed. We're, uh, still in discussions internally with some of the other utility providers. We would like to provide some feedback on this issue, uh, related to, um, the operations of each of these utilities and the cost impact that it may have as proposed currently on the agenda, and so we're just asking for a little more time, and we're gonna have a discussion with each of you, as well as the administration, to make sure that we're all on the same sheet of music, considering the impact that these utilities have and, uh, the amount of individuals they service. We wanna make sure that we're doing the most cost-effective, uh, solution while addressing the concerns of both the city administration and the city council. So thank you.
Postponing is what you're asking for?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven and four.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one, Centenary Boulevard, apartment M one ten, Shreveport, seven one one oh one. What are the strongest days in the week? Only Saturday and Sunday, every other day is a weekday.
Say that again.
What are the strongest days in the week? Saturday and Sunday, every other day is just a weekday. How do you throw a party in space? You plan it. Now, from the ridiculous to the sublime. I think it's a pretty good idea, in a way, selecting the Inquisitor as the official paper for the journal in the city of Shreveport for the period starting on the date of July first, twenty twenty-one, going through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I like to get one of the Inquisitors when I can, and I like to read what's going on. Maybe there's good news, and then maybe not. However, I would still enjoy reading one, and I'd like to get one when I can. Also, we still need sensory cameras at the intersections in the Highland area. I was told a while back that they were gonna be coming, and I do believe it, since Kings Highway and Shreveport-Barsdale Highway do have them just as well. Now it's time for the same thing to be done in the Highland area at every intersection, since people like running red lights. They think they're cute, but they're not. After seeing three cars running a red light on Stoner Avenue on my way to church on Sunday morning with my cab driver, it made me so mad, it made my skin want to crawl, and I can't stand people doing this, because they're breaking the law, and they're not funny. They're sick. That's all they are. I believe that public safety is very important, and I say this because, um, it's very important, and I want to, I want it done along with all the crime fighting. I think the public safety and crime fighting really do need to be addressed in this situation. Public safety and crime fighting must be taken care of, so please, if you could, as I pour out my heart today, please help us out in this need of situation. It really needs to be done. And when these sensor cameras are installed at every intersection, and even at Olive and Centenary where I live, I want them to stay put. I don't want anyone coming along trying to do something that they're going to regret, because if they do, they're gonna get caught, and they're not gonna have it easy at all. Especially if they see my face, then they're gonna wanna turn and run away.
Thank you, Sammy.
I don't think it's good of these jokes to be right on that.
I'm sorry, I showed you the attention, I can't prepare it.
Mr. Chair. Yes. I'd like to recognize Pastor Arthur Douglas, who was with us today, pastor of the Evergreen Baptist Church on Allen Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That concludes public comments.
Okay, and we don't have any, uh, executive appointments, they right?
We do have.
Okay.
Um, the executive appointments we have today for the Metropolitan Planning Commission, we have Bill Robertson and Rachel Jackson, and Assistant City Attorney Jasmine Cooper.
Okay, we're gonna do those at once, but can we do them together?
You can.
Motion, do we accept those?
Sumo.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Fuller, we're good to go?
Sure.
Okay. Then let's, uh, no discussion, then let's vote, please. And they pass, uh, six, one out. Abandon. Congratulations, Attorney Cooper.
Thank you.
You stand up. Stand up and introduce yourself.
Hi, thank you.
All right. Who the hell you got with you, Ms. Cooper?
Oh, okay.
Who, who was that with you?
You can come down to the front, and you can bring your guests with you.
She, she gave her the act like she didn't wanna come down here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor Perkins, city council members, and other officers. My name is Jasmine Cooper, and I brought with me today my mother, Mia Cooper, and my pastor, Arthur Douglas.
Hey, Pastor Douglas.
As well as my mentor attorney, Felicia Hamilton, and Judge Shiva Sims. Yay! I'm excited, and thank you very much.
You be working in the city prosecutor's office?
Yes.
Oh, that's good, that's good. She bout to hit me here with two, just make sure we go bring her. Great, thank you, Miss, congratulations, Jasmine.
Thank you, congratulations.
Pastor Douglas pastors one of the greatest churches in Shreveport.
He used to score about seventy points a game, that's how. He's a good basketball player. All right. Okay, there are no items, uh, under consent agenda for introduction. Madam Clerk, please proceed with the regular agenda legislation.
Resolution thirty-nine, authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving the property located in districts A and G and described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the city of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution.
Motion to postpone of a discussion, Councilman Bowman. Um, I spoke with Mr. Malcolm, and this gentleman is supposed to make arrangements to have a discussion with us as it relates to these leases. So, um, I told him he didn't have to drive up, he could just do it via Zoom, so we just need to come up with a time that's going to be applicable, where he can do that. So I ask for you all to postpone this.
Motion's postponed, or second?
Second.
Second, I agree.
Okay, and any discussion? Then let's vote on postponement. And that, that passes six, zero.
Let's get them leases, Ms. Taylor.
Resolution sixty-four, selecting the Inquisitor as the official journal for the city of Shreveport.
That motion to, uh.
Withdraw.
Withdraw.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Then let's vote. Okay, that vote is six, zero, okay?
Resolution sixty-five, selecting the Times as the official journal for the city of Shreveport for the period commencing July one, twenty twenty-one, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Sumo.
Sumo.
Second.
Second, by Councilman Nicholson.
That was all that was submitted, just those two.
Yeah. All right, any vote, please? Six, zero, passes.
Resolution sixty-six, authorizing the budget for the Cato Shreveport Sales and Use Tax Commission for the fiscal year.
for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021.
Some move.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Count. All right, I want to ask the question, someone was questioning the budget on the Sales and Use Tax Commission, and as I remember, the chief administrative officer has a lot to do with this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You oversee and look at their budget?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, then let's vote, please. And that's approved, six, zero.
Resolution 67, authorizing the mayor to execute a surface and subsurface servitude and easement agreement affecting a 457.82 acre tract of city-owned property with a Theon Energy Operating LLC.
Some move. Second.
Motion, and second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion, then let's vote. And that motion passes. I guess we could sing that song, we're in the money now.
Resolution 68, authorizing the mayor to execute a surface and subsurface servitude and easement agreement affecting 113.8 acre tract of city-owned property with a Theon Energy Operating LLC.
Some move. Second.
I want to move to postpone, is this a pine wave?
I'm sorry.
Motion postponed?
Well.
Substitution motion. Wait, are we on 68 or 69?
We're on 60.
Nine?
68.
68.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, motion has been made, and second on 68. Any discussion?
I thought we voted on 67. So, we on 68?
We're on 68.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, any discussion on 68?
We're voting to adopt 68, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's vote. And that passes six, zero.
Resolution 69, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to sign a consent of the assignment by GEP Haynesville LLC to an oil and gas lease to Pine Wave Energy Partners Operating LLC.
Some move.
I'm moved to postpone this, I know you said discussion on this.
Second.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Motion postponed, second. Any discussion? Then let's vote.
Wait, she wanted to.
Did you want to?
I'm sorry.
I need to, like to meet with them to discuss, so then tell me how this affects Cross Lake.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm not, I'm not opposed to further postponement. This was postponed at my request previously, and the company involved did reach out and indicate to me that this has no impact on Cross Lake. I'm happy to share the information I see with Councilwoman Taylor, and we can take it up on the merits at our next meeting.
Or we can have it at an infrastructure meeting, and then we can get a transfer.
It'd be fine.
I mean, if you're down, I'm down.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Well, I just, I just want to make the point that I've been told this has nothing to do with Cross Lake, I'm not opposing an infrastructure meeting either, but it just, it just doesn't cover acreage by the lake, and so, so that's, that's something we can discuss in a committee meeting or otherwise. Thank you.
69, motion to postpone. Let's vote. That passes, postpone.
Resolution 70, authorizing the mayor to execute certain documents and instruments relative to the subordination amendment and assumption of the loan and mortgage relating to the United Jewelers Lee Hardware Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Um, the representatives are here, if you'd like to hear from them.
I would, Mr. Chairman.
You can come forward, you can be your guest forward, Ms. Wayne.
Was they wanting to postpone it? Were they wanting to postpone?
Good afternoon, I'm Josh Collin, President of HRI Communities, H12 Grab Your Street, New Orleans, Louisiana. We're thrilled to be ready to start a major renovation of the Lee Hardware United Jewelers Apartments, which we've owned and operated continuously for the last 20 years. I think this is going to be a major upgrade for the residents and for that area of downtown.
Really quick, if I can add a note, just for council situational awareness, the governor also sent a letter of support for this particular economic development project as well, so just so you know.
I fully support it as well.
I don't oppose, but I would like, if you don't mind, you to explain what we're doing for the public. I understand the city previously loaned more than $2 million to, to support this project, and we're now extending that credit so that you can make an additional investment.
May I interject also, Mayor, would it be appropriate for Ms. Moore to come up and speak to any of this?
Yes, Ms. Moore, you have.
I mean, just if she does have anything else to add, that she might want to add. Go ahead.
To answer Councilmember Nicholson's question, succinctly, these buildings were the first to kind of adapt, reuse from warehouses into multifamily apartments in the downtown. I believe the city made a loan that was community development block grant oriented back in the day as a second mortgage loan to help finance the project. And essentially, what we're doing is bringing in new tax credits, a new Freddie Mac loan to replace the current HUD FHA loan, and then the state office of community development is putting in some additional CDBG funds as the second mortgage. And so the city's existing loan is basically being extended and subordinated to that, those two new loans, to allow us to do a first-class renovation of these apartments so that they are something to be very proud of in the city.
So, is the rent going to increase?
Is, I don't, is the rent going to increase?
Is the rent going to increase?
I'm sorry, no, the, no, no, the rents will not increase, actually. Yes, thank you, sorry, I didn't hear that.
Is there anything you would like to offer in support, or just as information for us today, Ms. Moore? We would not like that, right?
Yes, hi.
You look so pretty, buddy.
Thank you. This was a Section 108 loan through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We made this loan 20 years ago, about 1998. We paid the loan off with community development block grant monies over a nine-year period. We actually paid about $300,000 per year. This is pretty typical of the loans that we make over the years, because they need to be refurbished over a period of time, they come back and ask for refinancing. We typically offer that to them for the betterment of the community. They have to prove to us that they have no other funds to be able to do this, also that it's absolutely necessary for this community. We have determined that this is absolutely necessary, so we're in support of it.
Thank you.
Support it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Do I have a motion on second?
Motion.
So, was me.
She made the, she made the motion.
You made the motion.
That was me requesting to speak after I made the motion.
Yeah, I made the second.
Well, we really fought over the second, but I'm letting you have it.
They fight over this, you know. I did it, I did. I own an apartment.
Whose second do you want, mine or his?
Don't have to, don't, don't, don't let him come between me and you, Ms. Fuller, I'm letting him have it.
Quiet, all meeting, just let me have my first, whoever seconds is seconded.
All right. Y'all ready? We vote?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote. And that passes.
Resolution 71, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to execute certain documents and instruments relative to a consent to assignment of lease by Shreveport Renewal Limited Partnership and New Shreveport Renewal LLC.
Some move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that motion passes.
Resolution 72, recognizing June 4, 2021, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, do I have a discussion?
Aye.
Let's vote. Motion passes.
Resolution 73, accepting the public dedication of Nelson Street Right-of-Way in map showing Reed subdivision survey of the SHB-1 subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Taylor, is second. By Mr. Councilman Green. Any discussion? Then let's vote. And it passes. Madam Clerk, will you proceed with the introduction of resolutions?
Resolution 74, authorizing the submission of the 2021 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Is there a motion to?
Some move. Second.
Have to have a second on that? Okay, we just don't have to vote on it, right?
Right.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with the introduction of ordinances?
Ordinance 61A, to repeal ordinance number 61 of 2021, and to re-adopt and ordinance levying and authorizing the collection of a tax of 8.8180 mils per dollar on all property subject to ad valorem taxation within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year 2021, for the purpose of paying principal and interest on the outstanding obligation bonds of the city of Shreveport. Ordinance 62A, to repeal ordinance number 62 of 2021, and to re-adopt and ordinance levying and authorizing the collection of various taxes totaling 17.770 mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year 2021, and the amounts and for the purposes described herein. Ordinance 75, amending the 2021 general fund budget. Ordinance 76, amending the 2021 general fund budget. Ordinance 77, amending the 2021 community development special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 78, authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Healing Pharma USA LLC to use a space located at 7401 Dwellah Avenue. Ordinance 79, amending Section 39-1 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Shreveport relative to human relations. Ordinance 80, zoning case number 21-35-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the north side of Buncombe Road, approximately 150 feet northeast of Bert Kuhn's Industrial Loop Expressway, Shreveport Caddo Parish from C2 corridor, Commercial District to R3 multifamily residential district. Ordinance 81, zoning case number 21-37-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of Norris Ferry Road and Southern Loop, Shreveport Caddo Parish from RE residential estate district to C2 PUD corridor, Commercial Plan Unit Development District.
Some move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Can we vote on that? No, just any discussion. All right. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with the ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance 65, to amend certain sections of Chapter 105 of the city of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to wireless telecommunications facilities, and the Department of Engineering has requested that this ordinance be withdrawn.
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Motion is second.
Some move.
Okay, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes, withdrawn.
Ordinance 70, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2021 general fund budget.
Some move. Some, second.
Any discussion? Motion made, second. Let's vote. That passes.
Ordinance 71, amending the 2021 Metropolitan Planning Commission Special Revenue Fund Budget.
Some move.
Second.
Moving on to most, motion, the amendment first.
Listen to the amendment.
Oh, we're on 71, not 72.
Oh, I'm on the wrong program here, okay. Okay. Any other discussion, let's vote.
Taylor.
I'm sorry, I want to vote yes.
We know. It's okay.
Okay, that's fine, passes.
Ordinance 72, to amend certain portions of Chapter 26 of the city of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the architectural and engineering selection process, and there is one amendment. Amendment number one, it deletes and removes from the files the original proposed ordinance number 72 of 2021, and substitutes the attached amendment number one to ordinance number 72 of 2021, and this amendment removes extraneous language not intended to appear in the text of the ordinance amendment.
So moved on the amendment?
Second.
Discussion.
We can discuss when we get ready for that.
Motion, any discussion?
Second.
Discussion, yes.
Okay. All right, then let's vote. Okay. Okay, passes.
So moved as amended?
Okay.
Second.
Second. Councilman Green. Councilwoman Fuller. Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted you to just clarify what's the difference from then and now, that's it.
Oh, thank you so much for asking. Um, what this does is it kind of tightens up and brings a little bit more transparency to the A and E committee process, but it also, it raises the threshold from $10,000 to $100,000, which means that if you're, you won't, you'll be able to be on a pre-selection list in order to qualify for jobs under $100,000. Now, let me rewind the whole tape. The A and E committee looks at architecture and engineering work, the designs come, the proposals go out for the qualifications, the qualifications come in per project, and what happens is a committee that's made up of appointees from the mayor, of the chair of the council, and the vice chair of the council, and then the department heads. One of the appointees of the mayor is from the architecture, from the architecture community. What happens is everyone gets their big binders to go through all of these different qualifications per project, and there's discussion, and people have maybe made their own personal individual rankings, and then they nominate, and the top three go back to the mayor so that the mayor can make his selection for who's going to do the work. The feeling has been that because there's no set score sheet that everyone uses based on specific criteria in the ordinance, that not everyone's, that you're not showing your work, right? And then the other part is the bigger firms seem to be favored by the way that the legislation was originally written, because you're looking at experience and capacity as, like, more than anything else. So, smaller firms never get the chance to really build their experience, it's kind of like you have to have credit to get credit, so they never really get a lot of chances to do that. So, by raising the threshold from $10,000 to $100,000 projects, we're on par with where it is, where that, that ceiling is, or that threshold is in Baton Rouge. And by having that list, we'll be able to have the departments look at the qualifications and, and, and select so that maybe some of these smaller firms get more of a chance to participate, and then there'll also be evaluations so that once you actually have participated, after the adoption of this, your evaluations on prior work will also count toward your, toward your final, final, um, what's the word I'm looking for? I was doing so well, toward your selection, toward your score, basically. I think I got it all. What did I miss?
Yeah, got it.
So, the other changes is that the members of the committee will also now be someone from the architecture, someone from engineering. Fair share will also be represented on the, as a voting member of the committee, and then there'll be a third civilian, that's neither architecture nor engineering, but is also like just a citizen-at-large serving on the committee. Did I bore you to sleep?
You lost me somewhere. I was just making sure that this was, that we weren't really, I'm sorry, did I cut?
Councilwoman, no, you did not. Councilwoman, go ahead.
Um, that this wasn't, we weren't really pushing more, and I want those who may seem like they hadn't been, you know, in, in, in the process or whatever, I just want to make sure we're not selecting people who really aren't qualified in the, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
No, you'd still be looking at people who are qualified, but you're giving, you're giving an opportunity for some of the other firms that rarely gets, that have not been getting picked because of the way it was originally written. because of the way it was originally written. Now, it's not that they won't still apply for those bigger jobs, but they actually will have a stronger chance of being selected as top three on the way that this is written, because it doesn't just favor, it doesn't just favor experience and capacity. It also looks at, Thea, help me out here. It looks, are we waiting locally? Yes, we're going to put weight toward you being a local firm as well, toward your score on the score sheet. And I didn't just do this by myself. We had a subcommittee that was made up of Mr. Wheeler, Mr. Furlong, Mr. Daniel, and Mr. Christopher Coe and myself. We worked on this with Thea Scott and purchasing over several, several, several months.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you finish?
I think Nicholson.
Go ahead, Councilman Green.
No, I just wanted to ask a question that, at the end of the day, does this still mean that the mayor still has the final say as to who?
Yes.
Gets the job?
In fact, yes, absolutely. The mayor still has final say after we send the top three. What this means is ideally, huh? You get a broader selection, and ideally, you'll see more local firms and more minority firms getting to play.
Look, what I'm saying is, even if you all sent the final three that you all decided, if he wanted to pick somebody out of the first eight, does that eliminate him from making a choice of what he?
So the purpose of the committee was actually to present three. That's the way it already was, and that part is staying the same way, was that he picks from the three that are presented. That's the way it was, and it's staying that way. That part is staying the same.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I understand, Mr. Chairman and Councilwoman Fuller, that this legislation would mandate the use of score sheets as you've described. Is the scoring, do the scores mandate the ranking that is submitted to the mayor? Or do they guide the discussion under this legislation?
I think it's quantitative.
So whoever, whoever wins the score process?
But it's objective. So you're scoring people objectively instead of just kind of saying, this is who I like?
Well, I will say that I like the idea of making sure that we are being as objective as we can in selecting the professionals that do work for the city. I think under some circumstances, mandating that the rankings always follow the scoring does not lead to an optimal outcome, and I just, you know, I served for a year on the A and E committee, and I know that different members of the committee might, and did sometimes, score differently when we had score sheets that we used that were not mandatory. And so I just, I wouldn't mind more time to discuss this. Councilman Bowman, Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Fuller, so I don't want to delay it, but it's a big change, and I wonder if we could?
If only we discussed it last two weeks ago.
I, well, I just think we have to take great care to strike a balance between making sure, as Councilwoman Bowman referenced, we're hiring well-qualified people on the one hand, and on the other hand, giving smaller firms, local firms, an opportunity to compete and build their capacity. I just, the decision that came through the A and E committee that was of such tremendous importance the year I served on it was the consent decree firm to manage the consent decree project. And I thought that Burns and McDonald was a very good choice by the committee and by the mayor to take over that project. But I also remembered just that the, I just wondered about the committee's collective capacity to make that decision. I find myself necessarily relying on the city engineer and the other professionals on the committee because I just didn't, as a council member and a lawyer, really have the capacity to assess the, well, the proposals that were submitted to the committee. I just don't have that subject matter expertise.
Would there still be the deliberation process in a meeting and discussion? And when you have that many people ranking and putting in map, I think you're still going to get a fairly well-rounded set of scores. But I'll do a substitute motion to postpone.
I appreciate that. Second.
Okay, motion postponed, second. Is any other further discussion? Let's vote. And that postponement is passed.
Ornate 73 amending Section 38-31 of the Code of Ornances of the city of Shreveport relative to inoperable vehicles.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion made, and second. Any other discussion?
I had one piece of discussion, I did want to discuss something. On, I just, on the, pertaining to this, on the yard parking issuance of tickets, I just want to make sure that the council understood where, that the chief of police has the, let me make sure I'm saying it right, Daniel, has the authority to designate who writes these tickets in the yard parking deal?
Yes, he can designate non-police officers to issue tickets.
The intent later is to ask and get both to agree that property standards owns that since they are the ones that are already out issuing violations. I think that'll take something off of the police department as we do that.
The one thing that he said when Terrence Green was up here earlier is, they're writing the ticket and then it having to go through environmental court. So I don't, I'm not sure if it's going to be the same procedure that would be as effective when the police do it. So I think it's some little language in there that we probably, because I, we want to get them off the street as quickly as possible, which is, I understand the reference to the legislation of letting them, of allowing them to do that. The question then becomes, if I heard him correctly, is will property standards be able to effectively go in, issue their ticket, and then?
It's supposed to be the same ticket and process, but I mean, that's not up as of today. I'm just saying that's for further discussion. I just want to make sure we're on the same page when that comes, when that comes up, correct?
Yeah, citations that were issued would go through the same process as if they were issued by the, a police officer or the property standards. There, there's no legislation to bring that into environmental court, just because that is a much longer process than issuing a citation.
So what was he talking about today, then, of things that would have to go through environmental court, and when he talked about their process, SBD process of writing tickets versus property standards going in and do that? Did I miss something?
I didn't, I didn't.
You weren't, you weren't here.
I wasn't here.
You weren't. So I'm the only one here, my teeth.
Or not.
Seriously, no. He talked about that because I asked him where he have the staff demand to be able to do XYZ, so that's why I'm asking.
And he said no.
And, yeah, he said no. And then the process of writing that. So that's, that was my question, is will we provide them that particular capacity? Will they have that same?
Right, that was their, that's their intent, that's the conversation I was saying we'll have. After the fact, but I wanted, he probably would need maybe three more inspectors. I'm not for sure, but we'll, that's the intent to get to.
And they deputize us to write tickets?
We don't want you to write tickets.
I just asked.
But that's that.
Okay, let's vote. And that passes.
Ornate 74 to revise Chapter 78, Article 4, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places Construction.
Motion postponed.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. And that postponement passes. No table legislation to be removed, so we have an alcohol permit?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to postpone.
Okay, motion to postpone appeal today on alcohol, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Can we, any discussion? Let's vote. To postpone it.
And that passed. Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah. Okay. We have no property standards, ZVA appeals, are there any other appeals? Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Any reports from officers, boards, and committees? Is there a clerk's report?
Yes, we received the following letters of appointment from the mayor's office on May 14, Harold Sater to the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and Roy Greggs to the Caddo's Report Commission. And on May 21, we received a letter for Danielle Brown as deputy chief of litigation.
Okay, is it, may I pervert, do you have any additional communication?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and as councilmember here, Councilman Bowman.
Yes, I just, I didn't see, Chief rank me as out, I was on, I just wanted, just to bring attention, and it's really not attention, I guess, just awareness again of the, I guess, crime and the shootings and the violence that we've been having in the city. I don't want to harp on it because, I mean, it's something that's just been a discussion all over, but at the same time, I just want to, this, we need to have some real conversations, and some serious conversations. And it's not to, you know, I don't think it's wholeheartedly the chief of police responsibility or that it's been on, I know it's been on him a lot. I don't think it's solely his responsibility, but at the same time, I do think that we have to get some kind of a plan or statement or something from the chief. Been waiting and asking for that, that's been maybe about a year old now, if I'm not mistaken. So we, I'm asking, and I don't think I'm the only one up here that needs or been asking about that. It's been quiet, behind-the-door conversations, but we just need to have some real tough conversations about where we're going as a city. I do believe that it's partially the, you know, I think it's, as being the leader of public safety, I think we are owed that much to the council and to the citizens of Shreveport. I also believe that, you know, when I say real conversations, we also need to have conversations with our constituents, with our kids, with the people that we, you know, deal with on a day-to-day basis also. You know, it's not, I don't think it's a race thing or a black and white or whatever. I mean, it's all over and it's everywhere. But at the same time, because we can say black lives matter in one instance, and then in another instance, it does not. So either they, either they matter or they don't matter. You know, I'm, I get that, but at the same time, when we, and I say we as a race, that the black race are shooting and killing each other, then black lives don't matter at that particular point to me. You know, we'll march if a white officer did something to somebody black, but while we're shooting and killing each other, then nothing, we don't march for that. When a two-year-old baby gets killed or the five-year-old baby gets killed, and both happen in my district, we don't march for that. We don't go and talk about that. So that concerns me, and that's why I say we need to have tough conversations with each other all around, but I am very much so tired of tiptoeing around the issue with the chief not having a plan or coming to us with a plan or statement. That's what I, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wanted to remind the residents of the MLK community on Thursday morning at 11:00 a.m. at the Petroleum Club, there is a meeting with Ottinger and Abir regarding the Haynesville Shell, and then there's a subsequent meeting that evening at 5:45 p.m. at Reno's High School. So it'd be representatives there. And I also want to say a happy early birthday to my son, Dominique. He will be 26 on June 2, so y'all say happy birthday to the big cheese.
Okay, any other councilmember?
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowman.
Okay, anybody else?
Y'all invited the church, son.
We appreciate you very much, thank you. May this year...